Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Rockingham County School Board meeting for Monday, November 22nd. Board members, we need to approve the agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion for approval?
I approve that we, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McQuoak. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lour. Any questions or discussion board members regarding the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda approved. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to honor the United States of America and to do a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice
We'll take a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now move into public comments. We have one speaker signed up tonight, Amber Hamm.
Good evening. I want to thank you guys for giving me the time to speak tonight. Public comments is a time to express concern. I have stood here several times to voice my concerns, but that is not why I'm here tonight. We are in a season of Thanksgiving where we should remember the blessings that we are thankful for. Tonight, I want to thank each school member for the countless hours that you've given to, given this year to serve our community. Being a school board member is a position you hold because you care for the children in our community and you want to make a difference in their lives. I personally recognize the commitment that you all have made to our community and the personal sacrifices that you have made. Thank you. I especially want to thank Mrs. Reed for her years of service as a school board member. For the last 20 months, I have made every effort to attend the school board meetings. If I'm not here in person, I watch the meetings live or the recordings. I have had a lot of opportunities to sit back and observe some of your great qualities, despite the historical unimaginable, difficult two years that have been, that you've had to endure as a school board member and now as a chair. Despite the lack of others being kind and courteous, you have remained calm and professional. You are strong, so very strong, because how else could you survive the personal attacks that you have endured? Your commitment, because you are committed because a lot of people in your position would have quit a long time ago saying it's not worth it, but to you it was. You have the ability to express empathy to others even though there might be, you might not, there might be things, wait a second. You have the ability to express empathy to others even though there might be, not be anything that you personally can do to resolve their concerns. You're open-minded that others can have different opinions, but you do not belittle or judge or put judgment on them because of your differences. I am sure you wish you had more time in your day to do more, but you do as much as you can with the time that you have. Your passion to serve is evident. As a community member and parent, when I think of you, these are some of the great qualities that I see, that I see and will miss. After you take some much deserved time off to rejuvenate and be with family and friends, I hope you continue to share your gifts with others. Thank you for your dedication to the children in our community. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm, for your kind words. It's greatly appreciated. We don't have any other members of the community who've signed up for public comments, so we'll move on to board member comments and highlight by board members. Ms. Lour.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Hamm, for those kind words. Definitely in this season of Thanksgiving, we need to be thankful for the empathy and kindness of others. So thank you very much for that. I think the first highlight I want to discuss is the legislative, not legislative conference, the Williamsburg Conference that I was able to attend last week, but I was able to attend lots of sessions on legislation and got to really explore and learn more about the legalities of being a school board member. It was very enlightening and while this job is not always easy and there's not a lot of easy answers, the law does guide us in many of the things that we do, and it was definitely good to get some refreshers on what we can and cannot do as school board members. And then also to spend time talking with other school board members and finding out what's going on in other counties and figuring out the best way to help govern Rockingham was very enlightening. So I was thankful that I was able to do that. And then another big highlight for our area, the Broadway football team was able to go to, I believe it was the regional contest where they, they did an amazing job and ended a great season following a season not so long ago that they were one and nine. Do I have that right? So I'm very, very proud of the Broadway Gobblers football team this year. Just wanted to share that as my highlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lour. Dr. McQuoak.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Reed. I second Ms. Lour's comments because I also attended the Williamsburg Conference. It was for the school boards across the state, the Commonwealth, and all, all school boards were represented except one, and they're what, 132, 133? So that was pretty remarkable. So we had an opportunity to hear some very enlightening sessions and we met a lot of people and spoke with them. So it was a great conference and we appreciated the time to be able to be there.
Thank you, Dr. McQuoak. Mr. Falk.
I just would like to echo Ms. Hamm and being thankful for our wonderful chair that we had this year.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Dr. Schikele.
Yeah, first, again, I want to echo that. Thanks to Ms. Hamm for her comments and for really being at the board meetings all the time. So she wasn't just saying that we've had so many conversations even away from board meetings. So, you know, I attended a recent CAC meeting that she chairs and it's always a good conversation when we talk about what we can do better for our students and for our community. In terms of the highlights for Rockingham County schools, I got to attend the Virginia Music Educators Association Conference this past Friday and want to congratulate Beth Harder. She received an award there as the Outstanding Administrator for 2021 for Virginia in music education. Also, I want to relay to the board all the messages that I've received thanking the board for the bonus that was approved at the last meeting. You have one of the notes in your folders for tonight. And then also want to say thank you to a number of people for how they stepped up during the recent bus accident that we had. It's always amazing, you know, when you look at these scenarios that are these nightmare scenarios, you know, you hear train and school bus and everyone has to take their steps really in the right order. It's really important that communication is done the right way and in the right order based on who needs to know information first and then only then to provide information to those who simply want to know what happened. And Leslie Kapuchek, the principal at McGaughnessville, she was immediately on her way to the scene and again then went to the hospital with the families that had children transported to the hospital. She was joined there by Dr. Larry Shiflett, who went from central office to support the families. Doug Aldifer helping with communication right away, even though he was at a different appointment, and immediately as soon as he could involving everyone in these communication tasks that are so critical. Jeremy Holloway, our fire chief, as always, again, within minutes, because it's so important that we don't provide information that, that we don't have verified, you know, we don't want to spread rumors about, you know, accidents like this because they take on a life of their own. And so within minutes, I had a call from Leslie. I had a call from Jeremy Holloway as well to keep me informed. The Sheriff's Department was there, Virginia State Police. And then Kenny Boyers, the principal at Cub Run, and Ashley Helf, the principal at South River, they came to the scene simply to help. They, these weren't their students. And Kenny and Ashley both were there to help families, and so I want to make sure I thank them. And finally, this will take me a little bit to read, but for once I get to actually make a proclamation about declaring a particular day to fit a certain topic. And so I understand that Jennifer Stroop, our FCC LA advisor from Elkton Middle School is here. She's also a Family Consumer Science teacher there. And Eric Fitzgerald is here, our CTE director. And so here's the proclamation, Family and Consumer Sciences Day proclamation. Whereas the profession of family and consumer sciences had its beginning as home economics in 1899 when Ellen Swallow Richards, the first female graduate and faculty member of the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, blazed a path using scientific knowledge to address the plight of families with regards to water quality, food safety, and safety of home environments. And whereas building on its strong foundation, family and consumer sciences continues to use the family as its central focus, thereby expanding its content base to meet the ever-evolving needs of that entity, and whereas family and consumer sciences integrates the content areas of food, nutrition and wellness, human development, personal and family finance, family relations, housing and interior design, textiles and apparel, and consumer issues to equip and empower individuals and families to manage the challenging, the challenges of living and working in a diverse global society. diverse global society. And whereas family and consumer sciences professionals help people develop the essential knowledge and skills to lead better lives, be work and career-ready, build strong families, and make meaningful contributions to our communities. And whereas family and consumer sciences professionals work in careers as diverse as secondary and higher education, extension outreach, family and child services agencies, consumer protection, retail business, and as entrepreneurs. And whereas the conditions impacting individuals and families today are at an all-time high which heightens the role of family and consumer sciences professionals to use evidence-based approaches to help people lay the groundwork for long, healthy, and successful lives. Whereas policymakers and the public in general need an awareness and understanding of the relevance of family and consumer sciences in addressing many of the problems facing individuals, families, and communities. Now therefore, I, Oscar Scheichel, Superintendent, Rockingham County Schools of Rockingham County, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Friday, December 3rd, 2021, as Family and Consumer Sciences Day in Rockingham County and urge all citizens to participate in the activities planned hereforth. And I want to thank you personally for all the work you do in this really important field for the students at Elkton Middle. Thank you.
Dr. Scheichel. Okay. I want to make sure Dr. Scheichel is done. Mr. Fitzgerald and Ms. Stroop, thank you for being here with us. Dr. Scheichel, thank you for that proclamation. We know how important family and consumer sciences and CTE is to our students as we begin to look at what the future holds for them, which will be different than what it was 100 years ago, family and consumer science, when you had a sewing machine and, and were making pillows and doing lots of different things. And our students are engaged in that and, and we've had some really great presentations from students who've been involved in that over the years and it's fantastic that they have those opportunities. So, thank you for continuing to champion that work. Obviously, we have a full house here tonight. I don't think it's because my second, it's my second to last meeting. Ms. Hamm, thank you so much for your kind words. I know we don't always see eye to eye, but we've always had a great dialogue, very respectful, found mutual ground, and it's my hope that's how things will continue. Students in the house, right? How many students do we have in the house tonight? Are you all seniors? Wow. So, you're here to get. I'm assuming that you're here to get, to work on your grade, right, for US government class? Is that correct? Okay. If you need us to sign sheets, we'll sign them for you after the meeting. You're lucky, it's not a very long meeting. If you had waited until December or when we get in the middle of budget, it'd probably be a longer meeting. So, you guys have chosen wisely. The other thing I would suggest that you do, or I'm going to ask you to do between now and the winter break is go up to one of your teachers and thank them, or to a support staff person, or to a bus driver, or to one of our school nutrition folks, and thank them for the work they're doing. Nothing is more meaningful to them than you thanking them. We can thank them, your parents can thank them, but when a student recognizes their hard work and the support that they're being given, it makes a huge difference. So, that's my assignment for you. See if you can do that between now and the winter break. We appreciate it. I think that's all I have additionally for this evening, although I understand that there are some folks from Linville Edom in the house too. Is that correct? Over there in the corner at the Linville Edom. I'm sure that you're here to, to see what's going to happen a little bit later in the agenda, so we're going to move forward into action items. The first action item that we have are the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the CTE Advisory Committee and Mr. Fitzgerald, I think you have that for us.
Chair Reed, board members, and Dr. Scheichel. This afternoon or this evening, I have a request for you to approve an advisory board for CTE. But before we do that, Mr. Falk, would you please tell the audience what your mask says on the side facing me?
Our teachers don't do average, they do awesome.
And that they do, that they do. Thank you, Mr. Falk. We're very proud of our CTE programs. Ms. Stroop, thank you for being here tonight. FCS is, is a very valuable part of our high school curriculum and our middle school curriculum. So, thank you so much. And Dr. Scheichel, thank you for reading that proclamation too. Each year, we approve the CTE Advisory Committee and the advisory committee's primary function is to validate curriculum and to look at all of our programs in CTE to make sure we're on track with industry and business standards so that our students are getting marketable skills, learning marketable skills for future careers and for life. So, tonight, I brought to you for action a list of our CTE advisory members that are proposed for next year. With that in mind, I ask for your, for your approval of that committee.
I recommend approval of the committee as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the CTE Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the CTE Advisory Committee as listed.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion, board members?
Mr. Fitzgerald, I recognize a few names on this list. Can you share with us how many of these are parents of current RCPS or Harrisonburg City Public School students?
Oh, sure. On the list? Yeah, so, on that list, we have four of our members that have students currently enrolled in Rockham County Public Schools, and there are four on that list who have recent graduates. So, either eight or four, however you want to count them.
So, we do have quite a bit of parent representation on it.
Absolutely.
That's awesome. Thank you for working hard to do that. And in full disclosure, one of the names on that list is my brother-in-law.
That's true.
So, I will be abstaining from the vote tonight. But, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Fitzgerald, I would like to call out the fact that we have a student on this list, a current student.
We do. The current student that you'll see is Ms. Lauren Wilburne, and she's currently a student at Turner Ashby High School in agricultural education. So, we try to pick a student who's involved in a CTE program somewhere, and this year was Turner Ashby's year. So, each year, that student changes. They're only on for one year.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Any other questions or discussion, board members? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Ms. Lor, you're abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Thank you. Next is.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Next is Mr. Klosinski.
I'm here representing Steve Reed tonight with naked, and I present for your consideration the real estate contract and deed for the purchase of additional property adjacent to Linville Edom Elementary School for the development and installation of a new septic system.
To provide some context to Mr. Klosinski's presentation, as the Linville Edom parents in the back know, this has been a story for quite a while. We originally proposed because of the, because of the condition of the existing septic field that could no longer function properly, that we would close the school with potential renovation coming down in some years, and the proposal was to save that money, invest it in other areas in the school division. And it's one of those examples, just as you had mentioned, Ms. Hamm, always being engaged in respectful conversations even when we disagree. Obviously, early on, disagreement was kind of the key piece, right? We don't want our school to close. And it turned into a number of conversations with families, with parents, in terms of what it would take to keep the school open, how the projects that we had ongoing could be funded some other way. It's a small community school that has all kinds of benefits. And so, through the conversations, we, again, once we knew that the septic field really could not continue the way it is, we explored a number of different options. One option was a clean discharge into the stream that's adjacent, and for that, even though it's a clean water discharge, so the, the cleaning would happen on-site and the discharge would be considered clean, there's always some residual discharge. In this case, we would have had to purchase nitrate credits, and we considered that. But with those credits, you, you don't really know for sure whether they'll be available five years down the road, what the cost would be, because they have to be renewed. And so, a second option involved purchasing land that's adjacent to the school so that the clean discharge could actually go into that field. So, it's, again, it's very different from, from the current model. And ultimately, that's the direction that we decided to go in order to be able to send the design to the Virginia Department of Health. We first had to show that we actually control the land that the discharge would go into. And so, the school board attorney's law firm was involved in that negotiation with the neighbors, and so, tonight, we do have a contract. And so, what that will allow us to do again is the design for the new septic system would go to Virginia Department of Health, and there may be some changes that, that are requested, and we would incorporate those into the design. But then, once VDH approval is received, then that would be that step that allows us to then build that system and have it installed and keep Linville Edom open. But the first step is to approve the contract that you have in front of you. And so, I recommend approval of the real estate contract and deed of easement and adjoining land transfer as presented by Mr. Klosinski so we can send the design for the septic system to VDH and continue on the path that we charted really with the community for the last, you know, two years almost, actually, two years to keep the school open. So, I recommend approval of the contract and the deed of easement and adjoining land transfer.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the approval of the real estate contract and deed of easement and adjoining land transfer as presented. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move to approve the real estate contract and deed of easement and adjoining land transfer as presented by Mark Klosinski, maintenance facilitator, and as recommended by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Any questions or discussion, board members? Dr. Scheichel, many thanks for continuing to work through all of this with Mr. Reed, Mr. Klosinski, Ms. Mast. It's been, it's taken every bit of the last 18 months to two years to kind of get us to this point, and it's extraordinary that we've been able to get here. So, thank you for that hard work on that. Board members, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay. We have a new piece of property. So, we are going to move next to budget amendment. Ms. Mast?
Chair Reed, members of board, Dr. Scheichel, for your approval this evening is a budget amendment. Assuming that it is approved by you here this evening, that will be sent on to the board supervisors for their approval so that our budget can be amended and these funds appropriated so that we may spend them. They are a result really of all the additional federal funds we have received since the prior budget season, since March.
And I recommend approval of the budget amendments for FY 2022 as presented by Ms.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the board, or I'm sorry, regarding the budget amendment for fiscal year 2020. Do we have, or 2022, do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the budget amendment for fiscal year 2022 as presented by Ms. Mast, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Mast. I think budget calendar, right? Is that time of year?
Mm-hmm. It is. For your approval this evening is the budget calendar for fiscal year 2223. It, we've had a couple of things that have already occurred related to distributing information to the, to the principals, and then budget requests are due to our principals by December 3rd and then on to me by January 7th, and then we will start having board meetings and you'll see hopefully the topic that we will discuss at each of those. I would like to point out at the end, we are planning to have two meetings there at the end of March, one which will be an extra meeting for the superintendent's recommended budget. That's still to be determined because we will be kind of up against the wire there getting the information from the state to be able to put all that together. And then we'll need to take a vote, if at all possible, on the 20th so that that can go on to the board of supervisors for their board meeting on the 20th. It'll be a tight set there in the end.
And I do recommend approval of the budget calendar for fiscal year 2223 as presented by Ms. Mast.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the budget calendar for 2022, 2023. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Questions or discussion, board members?
When is spring break? And are we going to wind up with meetings during spring break? I feel like I looked it up and it's not on my calendar now, but it.
I don't, I don't know when spring break is on my head at all.
If we could just keep the meetings at a minimum during spring break, that would be awesome. Because with, with, personally with kids in the system, I might take advantage of spring break this year. I'm, I'm feeling like I might need that. And also, housekeeping, is there a microphone at the podium?
There is.
Oh, okay. I'm hearing some folks that can't hear, because it doesn't go to the internet, so.
I apologize.
That's okay. You're not the first.
The March 14th meeting for revenue and expenditure discussion is on the Monday of spring break, and then the other two, well, we'll see when the superintendent's recommended budget presentation will be scheduled, but March 14th, so one of those meetings is during spring break.
Any other questions or discussion, board members? Ms. Mast, you think we're going to bump up? General Assembly is going to be, is going to take time this year, is that your?
Yes, I think so.
Are you reading the tea leaves?
Yeah, well, kind of another thing we're bumping up against is also some county deadlines of some things that they need to accomplish in this budget season and how that goes into April in their meetings. And the calendar this year is one of those, we almost always meet after them, but the 1st of March is a Tuesday, so we're meeting very late. And so, we're, we're late and so that some of that is the problem, compounded with the first year of the biennium and all of that, yes. It's a longer general assembly.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Mast. Thank you for your hard work on that.
You're welcome.
Greatly appreciated. This is one of the most important things that the school board does is the budget. So, this calendar is important. Ms. Bocock and Dr. Scheichel had asked that you maybe share the preliminary schedule with the new board member who's coming on board so they're aware of those dates involved and the critical importance of those meetings too. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the budget calendar. Do we have a motion for approval? Oh, we did that already, right? Seeing, we already did that. No, I'm going to do it right now. Thank you for keeping me straight. Okay. No further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Perkins. Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
Chair Reed, board members, Dr. Scheichel, before you are three bid results for staff and student Chromebooks. I'm seeking approval for the purchase of 600 Chromebooks for staff via outright purchase, 300 Chromebooks for students via outright purchase, and 2,700 Chromebooks for students via lease purchase from Electronic Systems Incorporated, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for each of those bids.
And I recommend approval of those bids as presented.
Board member, you, board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the purchase of the Chromebooks. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we, I move that we accept the proposal that you've made, proposals.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion, board members?
Just thank you so much for all your work on this. The Chromebooks have been indispensable during the pandemic. And I, as a parent, definitely appreciate the technology that we have available. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, board members, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Aldifer?
Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel, we are going to be talking about some policy provisions. But before we do, I want to introduce you to one of our newest members of the central office. She's no stranger to you all. As you all know, Marcy Williams, who has been a long time building administrator for us, will now be taking over, has taken over the position of supervisor of policy and compliance. So, she's going to be doing a variety of things in this role. One of them will be working with policy. So, she and I will be working kind of hand in hand as we work through policy revisions and adding new policy to the policy manual. And Debbie Graham, who is her assistant, will be working through that as well. So, I've asked her to come and, and be a part of this, this evening as well. Just some other things that she'll be involved in. She's also going to be taking over the roles that Becky Hill Schiflett formerly had related to truancy and attendance and homebound, home-based. She'll also be our court liaison in working with truancy cases. So, that allows then Becky to work with our tiered systems of support. So, now she can concentrate in that area. Another really big part of what Marcy does is working as our Title IX coordinator. So, one of the policies that we'll be looking at, you'll be seeing this evening, is about a very significant revision to our Title IX policy or sexual harassment policy. There's been quite a few changes that have been made to that policy and to the guidelines through Title IX. And Marcy will be working and has been working through issues that relate to sexual harassment or any harassment related on national origin or race and those types of things. So, it's quite, quite a job. She keeps the road pretty hot driving around and, and working with different schools and different issues that, that we're working through. So, those are issues and things that would have formerly been handled by mostly myself and Ms. Judd, the Chief Human Resources Officer. So, we very much welcome Marcy to be a part of that. So, I'll let her just say a few words to you as well, and then we'll just talk about a couple of the policies.
Yes. Good evening. And I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Scheichel for this opportunity, this new position. As Doug said, I am not new to the county, but I am in this new role. My position currently had been as administrator for 30 years. And I'm looking around this room and probably was a principal to a few of the folks here tonight. And one of my goals as a principal was always to instill upon my students that you needed to be lifelong learners. And I'm living that today in this new position. I learn something new every day. But I am enjoying it, and I want to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Marcy. So, we do have four policies for your information this evening. The one I just had mentioned, we talked about policy JFHA, about sexual harassment, or prohibition, prohibition against harassment and retaliation, suicide prevention, which is a, we're basically adopting the VSBA policy related to that, a minor revision to policy AC, non-discrimination, and also a few adjustments or revisions to equal educational opportunities, which is actually connected to the same process that we'll be following in JFHA. So, again, I'm happy to answer questions you may have this evening, or at any time you want to give me a call, and we can talk about those as well.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Aldifer?
Not this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Aldifer. Appreciate it. Welcome, Ms. Williams. Thanks for doing that. I know that it's going to be a huge task. So, and I understand the learning curve. But thank you for being with us tonight. Okay. Board members, in your packet, you have the attendance report for October 2021. And we will move into other business and school board questions. So, we will start with Mr. Falk.
I would like to ask the superintendent if you could arrange for someone to come to a meeting and describe for the board the process by which we use to place books in schools and in our libraries, and how we approve reading material and different things like that.
Absolutely. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Dr. McQuilkin?
I pass.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Ms. Lur?
Well, tonight, I don't have to ask about Linville Edom, so that's good. But I would like to ask about school bus cameras. Do you have an update for me on school bus cameras?
Yeah. I spoke to Jeremy Mason, our Transportation Director, a few weeks ago. And we have some cameras that we can install for our pilot project. And so, that's underway. That's, I think, seven buses total. It's a little bit of a different process than what was envisioned, you know, a decade or so ago. This would not involve a third-party vendor. So, at this point, he is checking with the Sheriff's Department to make sure that the process that we would use here, so those are our cameras installed, that would recognize when the stop, stop arm is deployed. And if someone drives by, it would record that. And then, ideally, that video evidence would then simply be turned over to the Sheriff's Department, just like we write up a report now. The report would still be written, but there would be the video evidence. And that may actually serve in lieu of the bus driver's testimony. So, the bus drivers wouldn't have to take time out of their day to come to court in those cases if video evidence is available. But again, that takes some coordination. But we're installing the cameras on those buses to make sure that they operate as we envisioned they, they would.
Great. Thank you for that. Great. Thank you for that. And thanks for all your work. And please pass that along to, to Mr. Mason as well. Family and Consumer Science Day. Boy, that sounds exciting. And if there are chocolate chip cookies involved anywhere, if you could please invite the school board, that would be great. I would like to, if there's any celebrations going on, if you all could please let the board know, that would be awesome. And happy Family and Consumer Science Day. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Dr. Scheichel?
Yeah. I want to add to, you know, what I had said earlier in terms of, you know, what happened at the accident scene today and for the last few days since the accident. I will say that Jeremy Mason actually has been driving that route. So, again, even there, the Transportation Director, who also was obviously involved from second one of getting the call that this had happened, and not only was he there at the scene, but then because there were no other drivers available for the next few days to drive that because of our bus driver shortage, he actually took it upon himself and, and drove those kids to school and back home from school. So, I want to thank Jeremy Mason specifically about, for that.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, we have reason to go into closed meeting. Do we have a motion for us to enter closed meeting?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711. A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation. And A2, one or more particular students specifically related to requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion, board members? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're in closed session. Thank you all for being us, being here with us this evening. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. I hope this week is full of health and peace for all of you. Please be careful. Students going home. Be careful.